Good evening. I'm calling the Monday, March thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three Planning Commission Meeting to Order. Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. All right. First item on the agenda is the approval of tonight's agenda. Does anyone have any requests for changes to the agenda? Entertaining motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor approving the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
All right, agenda is approved. Moving on, we have the minutes from the meeting held on February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Any requests for edits to the minutes or concerns about the minutes? All right, seeing none, I entertain a motion to approve of the minutes.
Move to approve the Planning Commission meetings, meeting minutes dated February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
All right, I have a motion to approve the minutes, so I have a second.
I'll second.
I have a second. All those in favor approving the minutes say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Moving on, we have three public hearings this evening. First one is six-two-four-five Duck Lake Road Building Move, two thousand and twenty-two dash twenty. This is a request for building move to relocate an existing detached garage from seventeen-one-one-seven sixty-second Street West to sixty-two-four-five Duck Lake Road. Will a proponent of the project please come forward? Good evening.
Hi.
If you would state your name for the record and tell us about your request, please.
Sure. My name is Josh Hohn. You might recognize me. I was here about two years ago with the same ask. We just didn't execute it within the twelve-month limit. But I appreciate the chance to come and speak with you today. So my wife and I, we've lived here in Eden Prairie since two thousand and nine when we built our house. Love the community, plan to stay in the community. We've got three kids. Plan to be here until they're, until they're moved on. So what my project is, is it's an ask for a lot line adjustment along with a garage building move in conjunction with that. So essentially what happened, our neighbor passed away, who we've lived next to our entire time there, had the opportunity to purchase his house, which is right next door to us. If you want to go ahead and pull up the, the next slide, please. This'll do a pretty good job. So I'm sure you guys have got the staff report. Sarah and the team here at the city did a really nice job of depicting what we're trying to do. They've been great to work with. But this, this little depiction does a pretty nice job. So essentially, the house on the top to the north of us is, is the one-seven-one-one-seven West Sixty-second Street. Our house is at the bottom of the screen there on the south side. So essentially what the ask is, is, is to propose a lot line adjustment, which you can see depicted in red there. What that will do is that would allow for enough square footage to be within the seven-point-five percent auxiliary building requirements of the city. And then at that point, I'd engage with an excavation company and a building move company, adding, adding building moving down in Farmington. I've been in touch with them. They've confirmed that the building is structurally sound to be moved. And essentially, we'd move the building approximately seventy-five feet over closer to our house. It would help to create some level of separation between our lot and then a lot next door. There's a good depiction from the, from the house side looking back towards our house. There really are no structures in the way of the move. We really wouldn't have to go out onto the street with the equipment to do it. It would all kind of be contained with on the, on the lot itself. Once the, once the garage is moved over, the remaining lot would, would be enough space for two complete Eden Prairie lots would still remain because it is, it is a pretty large lot. So it could accommodate two low-density lots in the future. And then the plan would be, I'd also provide a one-stall garage on the existing cement pad that's there. We'd have to take out a little bit of the pad that exists and a little bit of the driveway to comply with the easements requirements. If you want to advance forward, I have had this professionally surveyed as well. You can see, go back just one slide. I have had it professionally surveyed. And I'd also work with that survey as well to make sure that we're in line with, with grading requirements, drainage requirements, and make sure that the easement and utilities are, are in line with where they need to be. Certainly, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any initial questions for Mr. Hohn? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Will you provide the planner's report, Jeremy?
Yes, Chair Commissioners. As, as the applicant had noted, you had reviewed this a couple of years ago. At the time, and again, this request, we've identified kind of four criteria when you're considering a, a building move. Four factors are structural integrity of the building, use of the building, consistency with the zoning ordinance for the new location, and then the general neighborhood character. The staff's finding include that the building is structurally sound and can withstand a move. Cause of damage or concern to neighbors. The use of the building as a garage is appropriate in a single-family residential neighborhood. Assuming the building is located in a conforming location, which will be part of the building permit process. It will, it will comply with the applicable zoning code. Also, the applicant is building another, at least, single-story or single-stall garage on the existing lot, so that that lot will have a covered parking stall, so that lot will comply. And then from a neighborhood character standpoint, really no impact at all. You're just moving from one lot within the neighborhood to another lot within the neighborhood. So with that, staff is recommending approval subject to the four conditions that are outlined in your memo. We have been answering any questions?
Thank you. Questions for the city? Okay. This is a public hearing. If anyone would like to come forward and speak for or against this request, please do so now. Not seeing anyone. I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
Motion to close. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor of closing public hearing say aye.
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 Opposed? Public hearing is closed. Would anyone like further discussion or would someone like to make a motion?
Mr. Chair, just for the record, I recall this application a couple of years ago. It seemed rather straightforward, smooth, and I still support it.
Thank you, Commissioner Farr. Someone like to make a motion?
I'll go ahead and make a motion. Make a motion to approve the request to relocate existing DTS garage from the one-seven-one-one-seven sixty-second Street to six-two-four-five Duck Lake Road as represented in the March thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three staff report.
All right, motion for Commissioner Farr. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Groot. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Would anyone like to abstain? All right. Good luck with your move, Mr. Hohn. Right. Moving on, our second public hearing this evening is Holiday Inn Express, two thousand and twenty-two dash sixteen. This is a request for a site plan review on two-point-nine-nine acres. Will a proponent of the project please come forward? Good evening.
Good evening.
If you would state your name for the record and please tell us about your request.
Yeah, good evening. My name is Michael Mon. I'm an architect representing the Holiday Inn Conversion. We're looking at modifying this property to convert it from an existing Comfort Inn, which the flag has been brought down. And we're looking at rebranding this to Holiday Inn Express. As part of that, most of the work is interior remodeling, lobbies, guest rooms. But part of this is a request from Intercontinental Holiday Inn people to put an outdoor pool. So our project before you today is an addition to the building, about eighteen-hundred square feet, single-story. That's attached to the north side of this facility. And we're looking to get that approved through the, the process here. We've been working with Ben Schneider at the city. He's done a great job guiding us through the process. So up for you is the, the site plan of the building. You can see the existing rather long rectangular building. Where again, to the northwest corner, north side, west end, we're looking at adding eighty, about eighteen-hundred square feet in the red. Just to the left of that, there will be an outdoor patio. That will be for just guest access. Looking at probably just putting metal railings around that flat patio. That'll be accessed from the pool just for guest use. As part of this property conversion, we, well, as, as you know, the light rail has been disrupting a few properties along. We're actually looking at removing all the parking along the south side of the property line that adjacent to the light rail that currently falls within the setbacks of this property. So we have the benefit of probably having an extra maybe fifty parking stalls to, to work with here. So there's, there's several things working for us as part of this. We're able to reduce down and still fall within the parking allowed. Plus, as part of the interior remodel, we're reducing the total number of guest rooms from one-nineteen to ninety-nine. We're combining a bunch of the rooms to form suites. And so the actual parking count drops due to that. So everything is working in our favor to take advantage of, you know, reducing this down and landscaping along the light rail rather than parking along that. Okay, I'm gonna switch to the next, please. This is how our first floor plan lays out and roughly how the addition ties in. We're working with the west, the west end of the building. To the left on this image is our main entrance, which will stay as part of this project. We're going to remodel and update the lobby. And then as you go into the building slightly, we, we're creating, well, we're taking advantage of an existing corridor that'll tie right into basically a bridge to the new addition. Okay, that's the big picture of the first floor. If you want to talk, here's, here's a little bit of enlarged view. Now, this building that we're adding is actually in two pieces. The eight-foot along the existing building will be dropped down to a lower elevation, so we can tuck under the second-floor windows and take advantage of keeping those rooms and their external PTAC air conditioners. And then the building, as it gets out to the actual pool area, will pop up, so we've got like twelve-foot clear in there. So the facade of the building won't reflect that drop. Will create a, a lower section that'll be behind a parapet wall, basically, but just so you understand how this is being put together. Here's the overall elevations. We are looking at recoloring the existing building. Everything you see here in brown is the existing brick to remain. We're going to take all of the EFS elements and recolor it to match the Holiday Inn color specs. One of the things we're looking at with the addition is we're actually cladding that in brick to match the existing building. So we're working with precasters right now to figure out exactly what that means. But the goal is to match the brick as much as you can match a thirty-five-year-old brick to today's suppliers. We're gonna do the best, the idea is to have this seamlessly blend in with the existing building and not stand out. Here is just a large views, very simple, basically a box addition. You can see the, the parapet running around the higher portion, the lower parapet's adjacent to the building. That sort of reflects that, that slot, I'll call it for lack of a better term. And then I think the last image is just our perspective of how it fits in with the existing building. So the staff has done a great job of summarizing this in their report. Do you have any questions for me at this point or?
Questions? For Mr. Mon? Thank you. We'll go to the city report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Commissioners. As the applicant noted, it's an eighteen-hundred-square-foot addition with an outdoor patio. The building materials comply with the, with the design standards of the city code. The improvements to the parking lot in terms of removing some non-conforming park installs, adding some parking lot islands, landscaping those islands, all comply with the code and update the, update the site. Excuse me. Staff can support the, the addition as it complies with the city code. And frankly, you know, the reduction of the parking spaces also does help conform or allow for opportunity for some additional parking lot landscaping and things of that nature. Staff is supporting or, excuse me, recommending approval subject to the conditions they're outlining in the staff report, which are the standard conditions of Watershed District approval, engineers' approval of the utilities, things of that nature.
Great, thank you. Questions for the city? Okay, not seeing any. This is a public hearing. If anyone would like to come forward and speak for or against this project, please do so now. All right, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing and further discussion if we'd like.
Move.
Have a motion to close. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, and a second from Commissioner Marcos. All those in favor of closing the public hearing say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing's closed. Any further discussion here? Yes, Commissioner Marcos.
I think I'll just add that it looks like a nice upgrade to that building. And anytime we can reduce parking, we don't usually see that, so it's a nice bonus.
Thank you, Commissioner Marcos. Mr. Chair? Commissioner Farr.
I think it's a win also, reduction, parking, and nice building improvement. Keep it updated. I'm for it.
As am I. All right. I just drove by this not long ago. You forget that building was over there, so it'd be nice. Upgrade for sure. So, all right, entertaining motion from someone?
Mr. Chairman, move to recommend approval for a site plan review on two-point-nine-nine acres as represented in the March thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three staff report and on plan stamped dated February twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three.
Motion for Commissioner Kirk for approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second for Commissioner Marcos. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And would anyone like to abstain? Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Mon. Good luck moving forward.
All right, the last public hearing this evening is a code amendment for a mixed-use zoning district. This is a request to amend the city code, Chapter eleven, relating to the creation of a mixed-use zoning district. Jeremy, will you be presenting this one?
I will.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Commissioners. Included in the two thousand and forty comprehensive plan was an area identified for mixed-use development. And that area is primarily around the Eden Prairie Center. Also Fountain Place, kind of the shopping areas around that location. There are two additional locations further kind of north and west around Venture Lane and Martin Place. While those are guided for mixed use, this ordinance was crafted primarily for those areas around the mall. You'll likely potentially see some additional study for the Venture Lane, Venture Lane, Martin Place areas as there's a little, a little different dynamic than what we're dealing with. So we're dealing primarily with the mixed-use properties that are guided in the comprehensive plan around Eden Prairie Center and around Fountain Place. When we crafted this zoning, this mixed-use zoning district, what we tried to do is provide flexibility for those, those commercial properties for additional uses, primarily those additional uses being multifamily or attached family residential. What we're looking for in a development in this area is a cohesive, unified development character. And cohesive and unified will be defined by the Planning Commission and the council as the project moves through. But we're really trying to promote some reinvestment and some economic vitality within these districts. In all cases, we anticipate an applicant requesting a rezoning to this zoning district. We're not going to unilaterally, as a city, rezone property into the mixed-use zoning district. So a property owner will come to us with a proposal, and as part of that, they'll likely look for a rezoning because of the, the benefits that this zoning district offers. Really above all too is we wanted to make sure that the existing businesses, existing property owners retain their rights. We don't want to make anyone non-conforming that's, that's presently conforming. We don't want to hamper any reinvestment or development in that regard. So we tried to kind of copy what we've established in the, in the existing commercial zoning districts that, that is the mall and the Fountain Place area, and then add to it rather than remove certain requirements. That said, there are some changes that I'll highlight in a moment here. When we're talking about mixed-use development, we anticipate mixed use as both a vertical kind of component where you have multiple uses within an existing building, you know, stack one on top of the other, or a horizontal type of situation where you have a use or two separate uses in different buildings within the same lot. Or in situations where, around Eden Prairie Center where many of the lots are really relatively small, you may combine a couple lots and kind of develop a, a development pattern based on those. Based on kind of what's there and what you're trying to achieve. So trying to look for some thought in the design process rather than just using the easiest kind of option available. The main differences, as I mentioned before, we're adding multifamily residential, and the comprehensive plan adds up to seventy-five units per acre in this kind of guiding area. So it's not a, a small amount of density. It's, it's a pretty substantial density. And, and that will come with some additional study, of course. But we anticipate high-density residential in these areas. And so you could expect to see a project come forward with a seventy-five unit per, seventy-five units per acre kind of component as, if they use that from the maximum. Another difference from the existing zoning districts there in that area is we, we were proposing in the, in the draft a reduction of parking requirements for retail and for the shopping center uses. And the idea here is this will free up some parking spaces that can now be used for other uses. Obviously, or many of the properties in these areas have been developed under a PUD. So likely there will be an amendment to that process. But this hopefully reduces that, the volume of waivers necessary to complete a project. We're trying to reduce the requirement, and we're not just reducing the requirement because it sounds good. We think that because there's a sharing of uses and sharing of, of dynamics, you don't need as much parking as you would if they were separate standard suburban-type development. So we see an opportunity there. We'll try to maximize that. As I mentioned before, excuse me, before I move on from parking, we're also suggesting in this, in this draft, a reduction of up to twenty percent, up to twenty percent of parking if you can meet certain standards, certain criteria, and those are shared parking agreements, compliant uses, things like that, that they can demonstrate to the city that they don't need that additional parking. Again, this will free up land for potential redevelopment, but also not at the impact or not at the negative impact of, of existing businesses. So we see that as again, another opportunity for some, spurring some redevelopment and some, and some goals there. Mentioned earlier cohesive design within the development. We're looking for a cohesive design. This is something we typically negotiate as part of a, of a PUD waiver process. We're trying to put our expectations down in code form on this situation. So again, cohesive will be determined, determined ultimately by the Planning Commission, the City Council. But we're going to be working towards something that we, we think fits in with that neighborhood. One thing that we've added here in this draft is pedestrian mobility and bicycle parking. We're going to be introducing quite a bit of residents, likely. And those residents don't necessarily need to get in a car and drive across the street or, or across the parking lot. And hopefully they can walk within the area. So we're trying to provide a safe avenue for them from both a bicycle kind of mobility standpoint, but also just within the, within the development. You know, we've already kind of negotiated or worked through this on some, some projects where you have a kind of delineated path through a, a shopping center or, excuse me, through a grocery store parking lot, for example. We have a couple of those. So you'll see more of those things as we start to redevelop in the mixed-use development side. I should point out that the addition of parking requirements in this mixed-use zoning district is not unique or not new. We've already done a little bit of that in the TOD and the Town Center zoning districts. However, this is half of those requirements. While this is a mixed-use kind of component, it's not necessarily at the scale that we anticipate in the TOD and the Town Center areas. Plus, we didn't want to burden too heavily the businesses that already are, are in our mixed-use area. So again, introduce kind of our goals. These are the minimums that we're trying to establish to kind of promote those goals. And lastly, signage is a huge component, in staff's opinion, of, of character of a neighborhood, character of a development. We don't anticipate or we're not changing the signage rules for the zoning district. However, we are asking that as part of the, of a mixed-use project, we see a comprehensive sign plan, so you can kind of get a sense of what they're proposing. We don't expect a property owner or developer to come forward and say, yeah, this is going to be a Chick-fil-A or this is going to be a Burger King or what have you. We, we want to see kind of font, size, location, style, that type of thing. What, what they're proposing, so we can get a sense of kind of what the character is that we're shooting for. I'd be happy to go through it line by line if you like, but I think I try to hit the high points. If there's any questions, I, I stand for those. But staff is requesting and recommends approval of the mixed-use ordinance as drafted.
Thank you, Jeremy. Any, I guess just one quick question. Has the city attorney looked at this?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks. Any questions for the city?
I have one. I see the note on here about the mall and the, I know there was a letter from them last fall that they want more time to review this and says that there were verbal comments. Is there anything more that needs to be done with that since they issued, I think it was an actual letter that they wanted the review period, right? So do we need to follow back up with them at all or?
Sure, Mr. Chair Commissioners. That's a good point, and I kind of glossed over that. So what you're referring to is the comments made last fall about the temporary sales event ordinance that we, we adopted in October, I think it was. Learning from that situation or that, that process, we incorporated them early. So we met with the Chamber of Commerce in October with a general kind of idea of what we're looking for from an ordinance standpoint or goals. And then we drafted the ordinance over the winter. Hopefully, we're almost done with winter. We drafted the ordinance and then reached out again to the mall and then provided them a, a copy. And then they provided some verbal comments, and also mall ownership provided some verbal comments, which we've adopted or incorporated those comments into our ordinance or in areas where we didn't think it was appropriate for this type of ordinance, we, we responded that way. And of course, they have an opportunity to comment both at this public hearing and then the next one.
Yeah, great, thanks.
We've got half a dozen new EVs outside for building inspectors, I think you told me. Incorporate that into this mixed-use. What requirements do we have, if any, in the existing code to provide charging facilities, et cetera, for EVs in the future?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, we don't have a specific requirement for EVs in this mixed-use ordinance. If we were to go down the path to require that, it likely would show up in a parking section or parking ordinance. But I don't recommend doing it here. What we tried to be careful with was not add things to the code, in this code, that would maybe impede development, even though it's a good idea. We didn't want to kind of hamper potential redevelopment. So if we do go that path towards EVs in the future, you'll likely see that in a parking ordinance.
Thank you.
Questions?
I have a few questions also. Procedurally, are you okay with us asking questions? Because there's not going to be a, a staff report because he presented. Do you want to do the public hearing or should we just keep talking?
We could do the public hearing. If, if anyone would like to come forward and speak for or against this project, please do so now. All right, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Have further discussion with the city.
I'll move to close the public hearing, yep.
I have a, do I have a second? I have a motion.
Second.
All right, all those in favor of closing the public hearing say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is closed. Commissioner Farr.
Thank you, Mr.
Commissioner Farr.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Regarding the section on design guidelines, and you were talking about design consistency, Jeremy, I really appreciate that. This comes right out to say that the zoning districts must comply with architectural standards established in Section 1103 and conform to the city design guidelines. Is that conformity to our design guidelines consistent in all of our districts, or is this the first district that we're mandating conformance to the design guidelines book? Something in the back of my head was telling me that we only recommended that people look through the design guidelines and embrace as much as they could. I'm not positive about that, if any of the other commissioners remember, but this says thou shalt conform, and I like that, but I didn't know if that's consistent with other districts or not.
Chair Commissioners, I believe we copied it from this section to another, but I will confirm that because the intention was not to be more restrictive or more prescriptive than other, the other commercial zoning districts. So the intent, again, was to just carry what was required in commercial regional service, for example, because that's the zoning of the mall, to this area. So let me confirm that before it goes to council.
Okay, but otherwise, it didn't seem to be intentional to differentiate.
It was intentional to be consistent from one district to the next.
Okay, thank you. Next question I have is actually for the city engineer, Mr. Ru. This ordinance seems to support the future densification of the city in these areas, and it talked somewhere about looking at infrastructure and making recommended improvements if needed. Is this area of town already developed with the necessary infrastructure in our roads like utilities, water, and sewer that would support additional densification in these areas? Or would there have to be like something major that we haven't thought of yet?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, the sewer and water system was designed with a full buildout of the city, and many of these areas were contemplated. Now, whether each parcel, but in general, the area of the mall and many other areas, the system, the sewer and water systems are sufficient, at least from the projections that we've done. As far as traffic, I'm sure there'd be some, depending on where some of these developments intensify, there could be some improvements needed at intersections or turn lanes and those kind of things.
Okay, good, thank you. Last question I had was when you were talking about bicycle parking, which is a great thing. So I like the way it's presented, except for, I wonder, should we differentiate between the short-term visitor bike parking, which are usually racks outside, versus occupant bicycle storage, like especially since we're introducing residential, there would more than likely be an indoor bicycle parking room? And there's some language in the bicycle section here which says the rack has to be like on grade or on flat pavement or something like that, and usually we architects would put the bikes on a vertical rack for better stacking for residents and things like that, and maybe even within an office building, we would do something like that. So I don't know if it's worth going into a little bit more depth to differentiate visitor bike parking versus occupant bike parking.
Chair Commissioners, we certainly could. I think I would prefer to be broad in this level, and we can work with an applicant that come forward because we don't, again, we're trying to draft an ordinance that it could be component of residential or could not have any of that.
Right.
And so it's hard to kind of paint that with a fine brush. I'd rather be broad here and let the city staff and the applicant work together on kind of what's most appropriate for that. If there's a requirement for level parking or something like, I can look at that because that's certainly not the goal. Obviously, we have a bike rack right outside the building here that is used, and it's raised and stuff like that, so I can look at that to make sure that we're not too prescriptive.
Okay, all right. Yeah, that was paragraph, sub-paragraph three or something like that anchored to the ground, so not a big deal. I just wanted to make sure we were thinking of both types of parking for bikes. Thank you, Chair.
Mr. Chairman, just to comment on an overview perspective, I commend the comprehensive plan for looking at these kind of issues, and I think this ordinance, this improvement in our structure for development is a very positive one. You know, we all know that shopping centers, shopping malls, intensive retail is undergoing a lot of change, and there's a lot of things that are gonna be different. And I think building some flexibility into our ordinances to not only allow, but to some degree encourage more innovative uses of property in our city is a very positive step. So I commend what the city's doing and support, and I think the approach that staff is taking to not prescribe or close down more, but to maintain what we have and allow flexibility is the right approach. So I'm positive, very positive towards this.
Thank you, Commissioner Kirk.
Just a question for you, Jeremy. Under commercial permitted uses, I assume bars and restaurants fall under one. Is that correct?
I'm guessing they do. Let me look it up, though.
At least one white tablecloth upscale.
Sorry, let me just find it here. Oh, on line 29 there?
Correct, yes.
Yes, bars and restaurants are permitted commercial use as their direct retail sales to users and of goods.
So I'm just wondering why are three and four called out? Would they just fall under one as well?
You can make the argument, yeah, you can make the argument that they could, but those were added specifically as uses in other zoning districts. And how that works is if it's listed in one zoning district but not listed in another, then it's deemed not to be permitted in that zoning district that it's not listed in because a city made a conscious decision to allow it in zoning district A but not zoning district B. So yes, we're a little bit redundant here, but those would both be allowed.
Okay. And then last question, so three or four, they could also offer food as well, right? They wouldn't be precluded from it?
Yeah, whatever the requirement is or what they're allowed now, they're allowed to do continuings.
Okay, great, thank you. Other questions for the city?
Entertaining a motion on this one?
Mr. Chair, I would like to move to recommend approval of a code amendment to allow the creation of a mixed-use zoning district represented in the March 13, 2023 staff report.
Second. All right, a motion from Commissioner Farr and a second with Commissioner Kirk. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Would anyone like to abstain? All right. Thank you, Jeremy, for the presentation and putting that together.
Thank you.
All right, do we have any planners' reports this evening?
Not tonight.
All right, members' reports? Is it possible we might not have a March, second March meeting?
At this stage, it does not look like we'll have another March meeting.
Okay, and so Commissioner Marcos, could this possibly be your last meeting?
Yes.
All right, we can't let you skate away then. Well, thank you for your service and your term on this commission. You've brought a lot to it, so we appreciate it.
Thank you, guys. I've learned a lot, and it's been a really great experience, and I wish I could go for another term, but right now it doesn't look like that's gonna happen, so.
All right, well, thank you again.
Thank you.
And I believe it's also Commissioner Gooding's possible, his last term as well? Okay, so if he's listening, I'd like to thank Commissioner Gooding for his service as well, so. All right, any other members' reports? All right, entertaining motion to adjourn?
No move.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned.